Good morning, everyone. Thanks for being considerate. As you all well know, we're under construction here in the other room, so Public Safety has us here filming individually, and we appreciate your cooperation with that. Hopefully, we will have this all finished by the next meeting. All present here at the work session, we have two site plans today. Mr. Hans, want to come up?
Sure. Good morning. Peter Hans, Assistant Planning Director. We have two site plans today for the Board to consider acting as the Board of Site Plan Review. The first one is called Gapsey. This is on the north side of Jericho Turnpike, west of Cornell Drive in Smithtown. Basically, this is a legalization. If you look at the board, the area that's highlighted in yellow was an area that was expanded for outdoor storage without site plan approval. It required variances to be granted from the Board of Zoning Appeals. That was case 17275. They received a secret negative declaration on May 24th, recommending approval with two conditions. First, that they obtain applicable permits from the Building Department. And the second, since it is a legalization, we want them to obtain a CO for the site work by December 31st. The only thing that really remains for them to do is additional landscaping to buffer the outdoor storage area from the residential area to the north. So it's pretty reasonable that they can have that done by the end of the year.
Okay. That's residential to the north, that property, right?
Correct.
Yeah, on Jericho, residential to the north.
Residential to the north. There's a Suffolk County Water Authority Treatment Plant right there, adjacent to the lot as well. So that also buffers the residents. And yeah, it's commercial along Jericho.
Okay.
What you putting in here, Peter? This is gonna help this resident here enough?
They're required to plant additional landscaping and fence that'll actually go on the rear side. It's actually pretty well buffered now with the white lines that along here. They have to do additional on the inside. The next application is also a legalization. This is called Legends Bar and Grill in Kings Park, northwest corner of Indian Head Road and Meadow Road. We're recommending approval subject to five conditions. A secret negative declaration is on the agenda for this afternoon. Basically, they did some facade renovations. They put in that outdoor patio area for outdoor dining, and that's what prompted the need to go to the Board of Site Plan Review. We're requiring that they obtain applicable permits from the Building Department for the site work, that they obtain a highway work permit from Suffolk County DPW as Indian Head Road is a county road. The third, that they file an agreement with respect to the encroachment on county property. At first, it was believed that it was a town right, town property or town right-of-way. However, County DPW submitted evidence that it is their property. They don't object to it. However, they need to file an agreement with the county to use that property. The fourth is that they do some additional building treatments, such as decorative moldings, awnings, or shutters on the south side of the building. They don't need to do too much, but the south side of the building could use a little help. And the fifth is that they obtain a CO same by December 31st of this year.
And they're in agreement to all the conditions?
Yes. Both applicants have signed in agreement to the conditions.
And we have like county issues, that's all straightened out?
Yes.
Wonderful. Excellent.
All right.
Okay.
Concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Peter.
You did a wonderful job.
I just have three items, and we have some executive session matters today. One, Councilor Gooman Runkel, that CPI added to that?
Yes.
So is everybody okay with that? That's Jeff Gooman, Voight Form. We added the CPI for, you know, an increase in his rent for the property there. Also, not for a decision today, but I've received a fair number of phone calls from residents. Apparently, our code states that you can start equipment, landscape equipment, leaf blowers, mowers, things of that nature on Saturday at 8:00 a.m. We have been asked, Sunday's nine?
Ten.
Ten. Sunday's 10:00. We've been asked by a number of residents if we could change that code to at least 9:00 o'clock on a Saturday morning. So I would ask the Board to just take that into consideration and let myself and the town attorney know. I support it. I think, I don't think that's unreasonable on Saturday.
Yeah, I think we need to do it. Hey, great.
Who, Mr. Martin? He won't be able to do his landscaping.
I'll use a broom.
If you could, if you could take a look at that and let me know, then we'll put that into effect. That's all I have for open session. Anybody, Mr. McCarthy?
No, just executives.
Does anyone know?
Zach. We have somebody raising their hand.
What presentation?
Oh, Arlene. Yes, I'm sorry, Arlene. Why don't you come up, Arlene Goldstein, from, as a presentation for, I believe it's for St. James Revitalization Project? You'd like to have a discussion?
Hi. Good morning, you, Arlene, how are you? Very good. I'd like to give a question. Do you all know Lance?
Yes, we do. Lance, how are you? Yes, we do.
Good morning. This is for you.
My friend. Oh, okay, good. That's it.
That's it.
It's all there.
Okay. Great. So, of course, I was very pleased to know that you all are in on this idea of a historic and cultural arts district. And I'd like to go over some of the items that we have to really focus on to get this thing going. And first, I'd like to read to you the mission statement. Our mission is to create a concentration of cultural and historical facilities that promote the arts and fosters economic growth, development, preservation, and sustainability in our downtown. We all know that Lake Avenue has a downtown area. It's not doing well, does not look well. People don't want to go there. There's nothing there for them. And we want to make this a place that people will be drawn to. And with that, I have the goals and the objectives. Economic reinvestment, revitalization, reuse of old buildings. There are 16. No, I'm wrong. Almost 20 buildings that are vacant. And also, I saw something the other day driving down Lake Avenue. There's a huge sign outside of Yum Yums Massages. It's huge. We have to have some kind of a zoning.
Well, we do.
You do? Well, maybe I brought this to your attention, and we'll do something about that.
Where's that sign?
You know where the Werner Glass was? Well, the company that moved in, Yum Yum Nails, it's big.
Is it in the street or is it on the wall, on the building?
It's on the building.
And it's on the side?
It's on the side, yeah. As you're driving up, it's a big white sign with red letters, and it's really offensive, I think. Yeah. So, but that's beside the point. We have to get also people in the community to own this, to get, to really want this as much as we all want it here. And I invited Lance Malomo. You know him. He's done wonderful things in our town, then went to, no, then went to Center Ridge. Where is the museum that you worked on?
Oh, the Vanderbilt Museum.
Right, in Centipore.
Correct.
Right. And then to Virginia, did wonderful things. And I hope that he will work with us to get this going. And he has wonderful ideas, you know, he's a wealth of information, and he's been great for me, too. So I'll let Lance talk about how we go about, after the proposal, now comes the planning. And that's what we're gonna do. And Lance is going to help us.
Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen on the Board. I'm really here to back Arlene up. I was contacted a few weeks ago by a group of people from St. James that heard I had returned from Virginia to my home in St. James, which I've had for 40 years, well, 30, 34 years. And I have a lot of experience in the historic preservation end of city planning. In fact, when I was an undergraduate student at Stony Brook University, I created the Brookhaven Town Historic Districts Ordinance, working with the town and the first historic districts. That was 40 years ago. I can't believe it. So when Arlene contacted me with this idea, I thought, this is so great for St. James, but it's also an opportunity for Smithtown because if you're gonna adopt an ordinance to do this, you can have it applied town-wide so that other communities can do the same thing. I will tell you, when I did this in Brookhaven, we did the ordinance and I did the work. It was my senior honors project. It was a two-years honors project that I thought at the time, well, I don't have to go to class. Well, I should have taken the class because it was so much work and effort. But we created four historic districts there. And overcome, you know, engaging the community in that process was not easy. People didn't understand it. Initially, there was opposition to it. Now, years later, those were the first four. They were very successful. And Brookhaven has gone on and added 12 more all over the town of Brookhaven.
What was that, Old Stoneybrook?
Old Stoneybrook, Stony Brook, East Stoneybrook, and Dyer's Neck. And, you know, it's very interesting because I went back a few weeks ago to do photographs on my career. And what I was astounded with was how much better those areas looked today than they looked 40 years ago. And I had the pictures from 40 years ago. So there's been a real push on, well, I don't know if, most of them are probably newer residents, but there's been a real focus on restoration, preservation, and design elements. And we, when we set those up, they were done in such a way that we're fortunate, the town included a 50-acre buffer zone around the historic district. So if you'll notice, each district touches or crosses Route 25A at some point. So even though Route 25A wasn't included, the parcels that abutted the historic districts were. So the architecture that's been built along 25A in that area has been raised to the same standard. And, you know, at the time, there was some discussion, well, what was this gonna do to property values? And if anything, they've skyrocketed, you know, we all know that. So I think this is a great opportunity, not just for St. James, what Arlene's trying to do, but for the entire town because there are buildings. In fact, my kids laugh at me because I drive down Main Street, Smithtown. I don't see what's there today. I see the historic buildings behind them where they built storefronts in front of them. So when you're driving down Main Street, look beyond the facade because there are some beautiful old homes behind our flat-roofed, modern, contemporary buildings in there. So there's a great need for this in St. James. It can really boost the town. In fact, I'm sad to report, Arlene, it's not 20, it's 21 because whenever it's coming here today.
Oh, 21.
Well, there's an antique store on North Shore Antiques on Route 25A that now has a sign-up store closing.
I just noticed that.
And St. James really has an opportunity to develop the art gallery, antique, dining opportunities, something really unique. Other towns in this area are doing that, and it's really way overdue that St. James could make this. And there's no reason to say it couldn't happen in Kings Park or parts of Hop Out and other parts of Smithtown as well. So it's a great, exciting opportunity. What we've been wavering on is this one or two districts. Usually, you know, it would be a historic district or an arts district. They could, it could be both. You'd have to, like, craft, craft that. And as far as I know, Smithtown does not have a landmark ordinance that most other towns have. Historic landmark, not just a district. You regulate the appearance and demolition or preservation of a single building. So this ordinance could apply in that way, too. So it can cover a wide variety of situations that the town, you know, is confronting now and probably will intensify in the future. As Arlene said, we would, you know, propose that green design principles be supported wherever possible, which, of course, involves the preservation of historic buildings. You know, to tear down a building and replace it uses four times as much energy as just reusing the building that's there. It serves not only for public enjoyment, but to draw people, visitors who pay taxes, sales and other taxes, promote economic development by eating in area restaurants and shopping in the antique stores and galleries and other stores, card shops and other stores that are in the area because it brings more, more people there. It's really a destination, and that's what it's all about. And the beauty of visitors is they don't stay. So we're not adding significantly more of a population density to the town. They're coming to enjoy it. They're going home and they're telling their friends about that, so.
And when Lance said, when he drives down, he sees certain things. Well, when I drive down Lake Avenue, I see art galleries, you know?
Right, your vision.
I see, oh, God, yes. And you know the North Fork Bank that's closed? You know what I see that as? A restaurant theater. You know, they have that all over the country.
Mm-hmm.
And also, maybe on some nights, comedy nights. But a restaurant, wouldn't that be great? And there's parking in the back? I mean, that's all they have to. So, oh, absolutely. Well, you know, this is going to take a little while to do. We have to, first of all, we have to tell the community what's going on. And I would love to see signs beginning on 25A by the firehouse, down to Woodlawn, the future cultural arts district, so that the people in St. James know that we're thinking about it, we're talking about it, and it's something for them to look forward to, you know? Now, they don't even want to go there except maybe to the exterminator or someplace, you know, services.
Yeah, just spoke to them.
You just spoke to them. You need them. The black van's coming.
Listen, Arlene, can I ask you a question? Because I do, you know, I like your idea.
Yes.
And I like historic and cultural because I think historic is all in that corridor there.
Oh, absolutely.
So are you saying, so I'm to understand, let's assume the restaurants can't be right now.
That's right.
But are you saying where you could entice art galleries to come in and rent one of these vacant buildings? And if mushroomed, where people would then come into town?
Absolutely.
What's really so fortunate here is that you've got the zoning in place for commercial. And yet, it's not like we're trying to do this on Jericho Turnpike or North Country Road. Lake Avenue isn't that prime commercial real estate. And what you find, many times, these art facilities grow organically. You know, they start in oftentimes inner-city or use, let me use Patchogon as an example, where they go where rents are lower to get themselves in the door because it's, you know, questionable, you know, whether they're gonna make it or not. And once you get one or two, they attract more. And they need to live, they need to shop, they need to sell their goods. And St. James and Smithtown has the demographic that is interested in art and culture.
Yeah.
And has the money in their pocketbook to support that. And history, absolutely.
Yeah.
And these are, you know, we're probably losing a lot of people who live in the area who are going other places to find those opportunities.
Definitely. I find it interesting, there are 21 vacant stores. And for us St. James people, sometimes you can't, you can't drive your car through because there's parking on both sides. Where do those cars come from? The dance studio or where do they come from?
Well, they're going into some of the show. You know, there is a deli and there are places. But the street is so narrow, and that's why I love it that it's intimate for the art, for the art district.
Right.
I think it's a perfect place. In fact, somebody said to me, because they love the idea, I'd love to see cobblestone streets. I said, hold it. Let's, you know, step by step.
It's the Highway Department when they put the flowers out.
Right, right, right. And what I would like to see is some advertising, wanted community people to work on these committees. We need that. We need that. We can't do it by ourselves. You know, even the two of us or the Board. We need people who are interested. Now, I had a phone call from Vivian Merza about two weeks ago. She saw the Smithtown News, and she said, I love the idea, but I just had back surgery. And I said, oh, that's, you know, okay. But you'll feel better soon. So I'd love to have you on the committee. And she said, yes. So that's a person who has a lot of clout in the community, and she likes it. And then I got a card from somebody else who said, I love what you're doing. You know, count me in. And as I speak to people, they love the idea. And mostly, they like the idea that we're thinking about doing something to raise the community. And that's what we have to do. We have to do it.
I hear you.
And don't you love the idea of that North Fork Bank becoming a restaurant? Of course, they'll have to add on a kitchen, they need sewers, blah, blah, blah. But it'll take time for us to do things. And it might take three years.
Or you know what else?
Oh, go ahead, come on.
You know what else I'm thinking of? And you know, because I go to all these historical places and museums.
Yes.
I'm thinking it would be nice enough for an actual museum or art gallery. Think about that. You don't need a sewer. I mean, it's got, it's got enough space in there to have a, like the one out east on the way to Bridgehampton. I can't think of the, the name of it. It was in an old barn.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know.
What's in the middle? What do you think of it?
Elaine Benson's gallery on the right side.
No, that's, no, that's gone.
That's a different one.
Yeah.
But isn't it in that?
The Hampton, it looks like, it looks, yes.
Okay.
But couldn't, you can do that.
Well, that was built.
And that would bring in people.
Okay, but that was built. Yeah. You know that Natalie has her consignment, her friend's a consignment, Natalie Weinstein. And we do have a museum upstairs. You have to come see it. And she has acquired, because people are hearing about it, old, what are they called? The posters from that building when it was a vaudeville theater and a movie theater because it was built in the 20s. And then in the 50s, when it became a movie theater, when movies started to come in to St. James. So they have the posters of who was appearing there. And it's a marvelous museum.
You could even do, you know, once, once this is in place, then you get into the programming end. You could be doing silent films or vintage films in the evening so that this is going, you know, 18 hours a day, literally. And one thing I just want to clarify with you, with the Board, so, because you may not be familiar with this, you know, what's, what often scares people when they hear historic district? I can't paint my house. I can never change anything. That's not the case. What triggers the review is the application for a building permit. So normally, people can do anything they want with the color. If the town wants to regulate color, you can do that. But most places don't. Doesn't apply to the interior. It's only the exterior review. And what you would do is you would set up a commission to review those changes. And then ultimately, you have the final say. If the applicant is denied request for an alteration, they have the process to appeal directly to the town board, and you can overrule that, and then the whole thing is done. So there is a multi-step process. There is an appeals process. I think there, you know, people try to be inherently fair because we want everyone to win in these kinds of things. I'm just coming, coming back from Alexandria, Virginia, where I've worked for 11 years, where we had the nation's third-oldest historic district. And, you know, a member of the audience here, Dave, was telling me, he was in Alexandria in the 70s. It was a ghost town. It was just horrible. You could buy a townhouse here for $25,000. Now they're $2.5 to $3 million. And the whole town is focused on history. That's, when I went down there, that was my job, was to develop history things. We actually got to the point, Lynn, of creating what we call discovery carts. These are like little antique wagons with umbrellas over them that volunteers would take out on the sidewalk and interpret local museums or local history in this cart. We would have certain artifacts and photographs, and then they would talk about it to engage people right on the sidewalk to encourage them, this is where you want to go and act like as an ambassador. And that was immensely popular.
You have seven museums from other museums.
That's, that's right. That's right, you know? But, you know, museums can be very threatening. People think it's highbrow and I don't want to look stupid, so I don't want to go in there. But when you get that level of engagement right on the sidewalk and, you know, you're told, hey, this is a great place, you got to see it. And St. James has so many stories like that, so many stories.
Lance, it's the Parrish Art Museum.
No, it's a different one.
Oh, no?
It's on the way that they do this.
Okay. You'll think about it later.
And like, the words can't come out. I can't, what can I say?
Arlene, how are you making out with the team and the Civic Association? Are you working with those folks as well?
Yes.
Putting this together?
Yes, the Civic Association especially.
Okay.
Yeah, they are very excited about this. And in fact, they've even asked me to participate in their summer nights.
Okay.
Because now we're trying to engage young kids in art because that's where it starts. And in fact, I had a funny email last night. I spoke to the person who's in charge of my table, I'll say, although it was her table, but she engaged me. So she said, oh, I looked at palette paper, because I told her what to buy for these hundreds of kids, and palette paper seemed very thin. I thought we'd paint on canvases. Well, to a layman who's not involved, I don't even know if, if you know what palette paper is? You might. Palette paper is used to put the paints on and mix the paints. And then you paint on the canvas. So very nicely and tactfully, I answered her this morning explaining what palette paper was. So, but it's great that the Civic Association wants to bring art. In fact, last year, I had a table every night that they had the summer nights, and kids would come over and do watercolor. So there is a need for it. I know the schools do a great job, but kids want more. And one time, I explained to somebody that even though sports is great in this town, when I was a kid, I couldn't care less about sports. I wanted to draw and paint. And I'm sure there are thousands of kids in this area, in our area, who want to do the same, you know? And I think that this arts and art and cultural district will just thrive. It's just a marvelous thing to have. And I'm so glad that you were all open to the idea because I've thought about it for a long time since I was a president of, you know, the Arts Council. And now I'm just edging down Lake Avenue and trying to fix that.
Yeah. Well, we've met, I've met with Lance and Arlene and Natalie as well. We've had meetings in there. So I think, truthfully, we're on the same page. You're gonna work on the community side?
Well, we all are.
While we are.
I can't do this by myself.
No, no, understood. Well, we're primarily involved at this particular point with the infrastructure work. We're primarily involved at this particular point with the infrastructure work to start next year. We're working on that as we speak. I know that we all think it's a, it's a, it's a great initiative and it could be something really nice in St. James. I was very interested in Lance's presentation. What we have to do is have Lance sit down with our planning people as well at some point, put that together so you can explain the whole initiative to planning and then, and then they'll be on board as well as far as creating these districts. That's how it'll work. So, you know, we do have this, we'll, we, I think we're all committed to work on it. I know.
Okay, I want to know when we can put up these signs. It's most important because that's how we'll get community involved in it.
Where are you putting up the signs? I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We're gonna put up the signs. Well, let's say on the corner of 25A and Lake and another one at Woodlawn and Lake.
When you say signs, do you mean they're going to be printed on paper or backing or?
A big, permanent for almost three.
To state that coming soon.
The future of, the future of the St. James Historic and Cultural Arts District. And then, after a while, we'll start getting phone calls. You'll be getting phone calls, what's going on, you know? And then, we're gonna have a ribbon cutting. And everybody will be invited.
The first thing we would need to do then is put that meeting together with planning and Lance.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe what we, this would be an opportunity for kind of an informal community meeting with the local organizations that are sponsoring this to get feedback. You know, hey, here's what we're thinking. What do you think would work? Do you think this is possible? Is this the way the community wants to go? And, you know, so this would be a changing sign. Because I suspect something like this, I know in Brookhaven, I must have had thirty public meetings. I had one for each district, because each district had their own. Then there was the developing the ordinance because people were concerned about that. You know, there were some people that were completely opposed to it. And I have to say, I laughed later because probably the biggest opponent, five years later, I saw his house for sale and I was like, in the East Satoket Historic District. It's like, wow!
Yeah, we did that. Local law change, create the district.
Okay, so, can you look at that for us so we have that? And then, we need to look at that, plus your meeting with planning.
Yeah, because I, I think it might be premature, Arlene, to, you know, get the town to take an official action.
We can't.
Before, you know, you're kind of predetermining the outcome.
Oh, you're absolutely right, absolutely right.
So, if we do this at the local level, you know, it's a local meeting of interested residents.
I think the St. James Civic is coming up with a meeting. It may not be a bad idea to get with Kerry and kind of put out your agenda and have that opportunity because they're all pretty well attended.
Yeah, maybe have that, the focus of the meeting. Or a special meeting.
June eighteenth is the next civic association meeting. In fact, in my art studio, my students have all done paintings of the railroad station. And we're going to have an exhibit of the railroad station. Yeah, at the civic association meeting.
Can you have a painting right now?
Oh, do you paint?
We'll look at our house as far as creating the districts. And then Peter's here, Peter Hans, could you, before you leave, set something up so you can have that, that meeting with planning? Then, then they can come back to the board. And then, and then we'll take a look at it while you're involved with the civic group. I think it's a great idea to take it to them in the chamber.
And also, I don't know how to go about this, but I would love a plaque on the railroad station. You know, it's circa eighteen seventy-three. Now, do we get in touch with Gollum Road Railroad?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Uh-huh, so do I get in touch with the railroad?
Last time I could work with you on that, yeah. Councilwoman has a contact there as well.
Great, great, okay. Because that will start something, you know? Let's start naming the historic places in our town. And people will get interested and maybe they'll read something about it, you know? That Lahamadu was the architect and built it. And he lived right here in St. James. And his family, you know, his descendants are still here, which is interesting. You know, they stay here. We don't want to go any other place, we're here. Right, well, thank you so much. Arlene, thank you so much.
Lance, thank you, Arlene, thank you.
It's a pleasure.
We will continue to work together on it. And Lance, you'll see Peter and set that meeting.
I sure will.
Lance, nice to see you again.
Yes, good to see you too. Pleased to be back.
Thanks.
Arlene, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. You want me to? Be nice.
Get some good ideas.
She, yeah, she understands that.
I mean, there's things in there we have to make sure we don't turn into historical something. We can't do anything there.
Yeah, no, exactly.
Nobody has any questions?
No.
Is Captain Williams gonna come at two o'clock?
Yes.
He is, okay. All right, I'll move to go into executive. All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We'll see you at two o'clock. I move to close executive session.
Say it again.
Move to close executive session.
Say it again.
All in favor?
Aye.
And also to close the work session for this morning.
Say it again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.